We are ready. We are opening this meeting, calling to order at 6:35. Do we have someone on the line for an invocation?
Mayor Protem.
Oh. Mayor Protem Smith.
I'm on it. Can everyone stand and join me in some prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this evening, Lord. Thank you that we can come together once again and govern, Lord, and be with everyone who is making decisions, whether it's locally or throughout the state or nationally, Lord. There's so much going on in the world that we live in. And thank you for being with each and every one of us. Let us enjoy this evening, and in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. For our flag salute, Hadley, could you come help me? Do you want to just stand right here? This is our friend Hadley Card. Do you want to hold the microphone right there? Okay, and then we're going to face the flag, right? Put our hand over our heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you so much. She'll take your microphone for you. Good job. Can we please have the roll call? Councilmember Aaron Crams.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Welty.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
All present. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you so much. I am looking at the city council agenda. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes?
No changes.
I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Whoa. Everyone excited. Did you get that? Okay, and a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Aaron Crams.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Welty.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo. Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. And now for ceremonial matters. Today, we are very lucky to have the introduction of our new captain, Captain Leah from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Did I pronounce your last name right? Perfect. And I believe our lieutenant, Lieutenant Rails, is going to come make the introduction? Or introduce yourself, whatever you like.
I'm not shy. No. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. My name's Captain Andrew Leah. It's an honor to serve your city as a captain for the Lake Elsinore Sheriff's Station. With over 20 years of law enforcement experience in various assignments, I am a forward-thinking servant leader with relentless dedication to delivering extraordinary services that are highly customized to your community needs and desires. As your captain, I'll be visible, approachable, and highly engaged with staff and the community while maintaining the highest standards of the department. So with that, I will be available for any questions that you may have with me this evening.
Welcome aboard, my friend.
Welcome.
Great.
Appreciate it.
We are very excited to have you onboard.
If you need to know where the fish are at, just come to me. I'll look them up.
I appreciate that. Absolutely.
This is a very pro-first responder community, so I'm sure that as you go through Canyon Lake, you will see a lot of friendly faces, so welcome.
Yeah, I've driven through here quite a bit since my time, and I can definitely feel the support, and I appreciate that, not only from the community but also from the city. And I definitely appreciate that for men and women at the Lake Elsinore Sheriff's Station. So thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now it's time for me to do something very special and present our citizen of the month. Hadley, do you want to come back up for me? Is this a good place for us to stand? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of Canyon Lake, I would like to introduce you to Hadley Card. Hadley, what grade are you in?
I'm kindergarten.
Kindergarten. And how old are you?
I'm six.
Six. And did you do something very special for the kids in Canyon Lake around Valentine's?
Yes.
Tell me what you did.
I send Valentine's to people I didn't even know.
Was it hard to have a Valentine's celebration during COVID-19 in the pandemic?
Yes.
Did you have kids in the community participate in Valentine's? Making Valentine's? How many kids participated, do you know?
A lot.
A lot. I heard it was over 200 kids, is that right?
Yes.
And I heard there were about 40 parents that helped out with this. Is that right? Somewhere around there, right? Moms and dads? Did these kids in the community make their own card boxes?
Yes.
And did you help deliver Valentine's?
Yes.
Wow. That kind of unity and spirit in our community makes you a very important person, a very important resident of Canyon Lake. We want more people to follow your lead, and we are very grateful for you as a Canyon Laker. We hope other kids figure out exactly how to support their community like you did. I have a certificate here that all of the city council members have signed, and it says, "Hadley Card, Citizen of the Month, in recognition for your efforts to foster a sense of community and promote love and kindness on Valentine's." We are so proud of you. Thank you so much. Here you go. Do you want to? Do you want to take a picture? Okay. We're going to look right here and take a picture and hold your sign up like this.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Great job, family. We really appreciate you guys. So, good job. Thank you. Do you want to say anything? Maybe next year, do it again? Maybe for Easter? I thought you were thinking about something like that?
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Okay, maybe Easter eggs? Awesome. Great job, Hadley. Thank you.
Hey, Hadley, I got a question for you. Hadley, I'm the guy in the blue mask. Turn around. What's your favorite ice cream? Strawberry ice cream? Well, I'm going to make sure that I send you and your parents a gift certificate to Baskin Robbins so you can get a special little treat for all the little Valentine's that you sent out, okay? Does that sound good? Tyler, if we could get our address, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you so much. You're so sweet.
Thank you. Good job. Okay. Well, I don't know what's going to be more exciting than that, but, oh, we have a proclamation.
Janie Odell.
Okay. This is on Zoom. And there he is. Hi, Rick. Can you hear us? Wow. Well, hello. And congratulations. Retirement, right? That's a big deal. 20 years of service as the Executive Director for WRCOG. I know, Jordan, you've worked extensively with Rick for a long time. Did you want to say some words on behalf of our council based on your experience?
Well, I already tried this on Monday, and Rick's heard it once before, but I'm happy to say it again. I'll let you read all the wheresses. I skipped those and got right to the point. You know, I've had the pleasure of serving well, almost 13 years on WRCOG, and it's just been a wonderful experience. I've learned an awful lot. Like I mentioned at the time, I don't get up and speak a lot. I listen, and I learn a lot more that way. It's just been a wonderful experience with you, Rick. You've been nothing but a gentleman the whole time that I've known you, of course, and that certainly isn't any surprise to anybody. I certainly wish you the very best in your retirement. I know we've hooked you for a little bit longer than you planned on, but we're sure lucky to have that transition period, so I wish you and your wife and family nothing but the best. Thank you for all the good years.
Do any other council members want to make some comments before I read the proclamation?
Yeah, I just want to say, thanks, Rick. I know you know my dad, Larry Smith, very well. And, you know, we're sad when we heard the news, but at the same time, excited because, as you know, my dad just retired a couple of years ago as well. So it is some good times ahead, my friend. And thank you for always showing up. Thank you for always having great information to present and just being a stand-up guy. So we really do appreciate you, my friend, and enjoy your retirement. You deserve every bit of it.
Awesome.
Thanks, sir.
Rick, I would just like to say, when I started on council, I found you to be very welcoming and very willing to assist a new council member, and I appreciated that very much. Anything to add, Larry? Okay. So if you don't mind, I think that there's a lot of great information in here. I'm going to read this. This is a proclamation from the city of Canyon Lake in recognition of Rick Bishop. Whereas the Western Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG, was created to unify Western Riverside County so that it can speak with the collective voice on important issues that affects its members. And whereas Rick Bishop has served for over 20 years as the Executive Director of WRCOG, and whereas he is responsible for developing and implementing programs in diverse areas such as transportation, energy, environment, growth, and the economy. Whereas among these programs is the Multi-Jurisdictional Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, TEMF, program, which will provide approximately $4 billion in roadway and transit improvement in the subregion. And whereas, under his direction, WRCOG has been honored for innovative programs from organizations such as the American Planning Association, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Building Industry Association, the Air Quality Management District, the Urban Land Institute, Orange County Inland Empire Chapter, the California Chapter of the U.S. Green Building Council, the Governor of California and the Southern California Association of Governments. And whereas, prior to joining WRCOG, Rick worked for Orange County's Planning Department, and after that, he then started his own consulting firm. And whereas, the city of Canyon Lake is thankful to Rick Bishop for over 20 years of dedication and commitment to the region and would like to congratulate him on his retirement. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Canyon Lake, California, hereby Rick, sorry, hereby wish Rick Bishop a joyful retirement and many continued years of happiness and good health alongside his wife Carolyn, his children Brandon, Kaylee, and Jeffrey, and his grandchildren Naomi, Adeline, and Juliette. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mayor. And councilmembers, I really, I'm dishumbled by the honor, and I really appreciate the proclamation. Much more, I appreciate all the relationships I've had with you over the years. And, Jordan, thank you so much for the time and energy that you've put into WRCOG over the years and just the overall city as well. One of the things that truly struck me is how involved Canyon Lake is in the region. And I've always thought that when the region is strong, its local governments are strong as well. And that's one of the things that you've always tried to do at WRCOG. But I appreciate the support of the council. I appreciate the support of the staff. Chris, you're doing a great job at Canyon Lake, and I'm really excited to see, you know, what's ahead for the city. And I think, as you know, Mayor, as you mentioned, 20 years, 20 years of long time in one space. And I don't think I'm done yet. I still think there's a little bit of tread on the tires, but I think it's a good time for me to see what might be out there for me to pursue. But at the same time, I want to spend more time with my wife and my kids and our grandbabies. So, yeah, it's a good time, and it's a good time for me to move on. I wish you all the best. I'm hoping that our paths will cross again soon. I wish you all the best. Appreciate how creative the council has been, how creative the staff has been, and how supportive you've been of our agency, and I'll remember that for years to come. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service. Moving on, we have a presentation by our city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to present Councilmember Green with the little birthday gift here. He's got a birthday at the end of the month, and so we just want to say happy birthday on behalf of the staff. We hope you have a wonderful birthday and that you get to celebrate a little bit.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Bun cake, right? Yay. Okay. Moving on to our community reports. I believe on the line, we have our EBWMD Director Burke. Yes. Hi, Vice President Burke. Okay, here we go. You're on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your help. I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor Castillo, councilmembers, staff, residents, and guests. I appreciate the time you provide on your agendas each month and hope my updates are valuable. And tonight, I have quite a bit of information to cover. So we're going to start with budgets and rates. The next Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District Board Budget Workshop is scheduled for Monday, March 8th, at 9:00 a.m. The public is encouraged to attend these sessions, and virtual access is available. Your input and feedback is really important, so I would encourage you, if you haven't participated before, to try it. You can access the meetings via WebEx, and information is provided directly on our website. We are also holding community budget information sessions, and these are virtual. And the next one is at 6:00 p.m. on March 18th. And just a sample of some of the cost drivers we are looking at and that we've covered so far. So the cost of imported water went up 3% in January and will go up another 4% in January of 2022. Western Municipal Water District, which is our wholesale water agency, is also currently conducting their budget and rate studies, and their rate increase is unknown at this time. Southern California Edison has proposed a 21% to 26% increase for next year in their power costs, followed immediately by another 12%. We are now required to do a number of expanded water sampling protocols, which are both very expensive, and those continue to grow. The rising cost of regulatory compliance continues to surprise all of us, as well as the rising cost of health insurance. The service moratorium, shut-off moratorium that we're currently in has also impacted us to date over $1 million, and we anticipate that being $2.5 million by the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th. I, along with my fellow board members, understand the current economic climate as well as we are very sensitive to financial impacts COVID-19 has caused our ratepayers. Given our cost drivers as well as other financial regulatory requirements, we may have to raise rates. I know this is not popular. However, I'm available to discuss this issue or any other water or wastewater issue with our residents or stakeholders. Providing safe, reliable water at an affordable price is our purpose. By doing that, we ensure public health protection as well as regional economic stability. We pass a two-year budget so that everybody can plan appropriately, so it's not a surprise every year. We instituted the RARE Assistance Program to help our low-income residents and are currently expanding ways to find additional funding as well as to expand the program for emergency situations. And just so everybody's aware, the RARE program is funded through cell tower lease agreements and other small, non-rate revenue streams. None of your water bill goes to pay for anybody else's water bill. I just want to be very clear about that. I think I mentioned last month there was some investigation going on for our Canyon Lake sewer rehabilitation project. You might have seen staff out with cameras. So if you are new to the community, our sewer system is antiquated and is in need of repair. When our community was first developed, the topography, as it is now, makes it very challenging. So as a result, some sewer lines actually run through private property. Starting this summer, we will begin the Canyon Lake Sewer Rehabilitation Project, which is estimated to be about 3,700 feet of sewer pipe. Rather than rip up landscapes and infrastructure sidewalks, all of those things, we are going to employ a trenchless technology. So we are basically putting a little bit smaller straw inside of a bigger straw. The project is needed to address inflow and infiltration concerns so that when we have rain events and the lake level is high, water fills the sewer system and it overloads it, which also causes us to have to spend enormous amounts of money on capital improvement projects to expand the size of the water treatment plant. So as we get closer to summer, and I know what the timing's going to be, I'll obviously let you know when the project's start date is, as well as I know our staff will be doing some outreach efforts. Our Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant, it remains offline, as you know, due to PFOS. And I think I had mentioned before that we're going to explore two additional treatment processes to address that. But recently, the U.S. EPA announced four other emerging constituents which regulatory levels are going to be determined. So as a result, we are adding those constituents to our pilot project, so it's going to take a little bit longer to start. So we probably won't be starting till May. But the treatment processes that we're exploring, the granulated activated carbon and the ion exchange are also going to address the taste and odor issues that I know we've all endured for decades. The pilot study will take about 12 months. The plant will remain offline. And except for regular operational exercises, or God forbid, an emergency, the plant is expected to remain offline for two to three years. So the lake levels will stay high, so I can't always promise that, so let's enjoy it while we have it. We started our strategic process in January. I reported that at a previous meeting. And part of those efforts, I think I mentioned, were to involve stakeholders from the city and the POA. So those interviews are supposed to be scheduled at the end of this month and April. And I would really encourage, whether it's the councilmembers, staff, or residents, if you are approached to participate in either a survey or an interview, I really encourage you to do so because your input really determines how we prioritize our projects and our investments in the future. So if you are approached, again, I encourage you to participate. I want to talk very briefly about water reliability and give you some food for thought. So you may have heard on the news that, oh, we're in a drought. We're in a drought. I say that as we had a wonderful rain event today. But California is having historically normal, below-average rainy season. So basically, there's nothing out of the ordinary. So when you hear those sensationalized reports on the news, I want you to think about what's probably really happening. Dry years are now marketed with dramatic claims of impending doom when really, it's man controls the operations that determine our water trajectory or our resiliency. This is the basis, these drought events the state uses to mandate local water agencies like EBWMD to reduce water budgets and meet allocation reductions that are not always equitable. The state's actions have led to water allocations for over 22 million Southern Californians as well as the Central Valley Project farmers, which is exactly where we get most of our food. In February alone, 590,622 acre-feet of fresh water became saltwater. It actually went out through the Delta underneath the Golden Gate Bridge. Not one drop was used for groundwater recharge, which we know is an issue, was not used to prevent subsidence, did not improve water quality, did not help areas that need water supply in disadvantaged communities, did not improve economic reliability or food production. So basically, you're looking at 192.4 billion gallons gone underneath the Golden Gate Bridge in 28 days. That's enough water to meet 5.9 million people for a year. And over 25 million Californians depend on that water. And what has this done for endangered species, which is really what the intent of that is? It has done zero for Delta smelt and for the Chinook salmon. After many, many attempts since 2018 to see what the impact is to the Bay Delta, only four Delta smelt have been collected. The cost of water will continue to rise exponentially as the competition for every drop becomes fierce. And if you're economists and you follow Adam Smith's economic model of supply and demand as it relates to price, it can only go up. The current operations and management of our water system is not working for people, business, or fish. And just because they cut supply back doesn't mean our region is less thirsty. At EBWMD, we are working hard in Sacramento and Washington to make sure our legislators and regulators know the direct and indirect impact of these decisions. But residents and ratepayers can help. Use water wisely. Be mindful not to waste it. Be informed and engaged. When you have the opportunity to meet with our elected officials, let them know that water reliability and quality are important to you and your family, your community, and your livelihood. When we need to buy water for lake replenishment, as an example, we want to make sure it's available. draconian allocation tactics put us all at risk, especially here in Canyon Lake. And I just have a few final comments. Mayor, if you'll indulge me. Today's rain is a good thing. I hope we get more. There was some concern regarding water quality conditions on the East Bay. I believe the POA took samples last week, and we are still waiting for the results. Elsinore Valley's lobby will open again on March 15th following all COVID-related health and safety issues. I'm happy to report that Mayor Castillo and I will be co-hosting a coffee on Wednesday, April 7th, at 7:30 at the Canyon Lake Country Club. I hope many of you are able to attend, bring your questions and your concerns, and we'll supply the coffee. And I'm happy to take any questions, Mayor.
Before you do, I just want to correct the record. I refer to you as Director Burke. I would like to make sure I refer to you going forward as Vice President Burke.
Thank you.
Congrats there. Any questions from council?
I have a question. Vice President Burke, how are you this evening? Thank you for the.
I'm doing well. Thank you.
Thank you for the awesome update. I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. We're predicting Edison to go up between 33% and 38%. First year being 21% to 26%, the second year being 12%. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is the current rate study or case they have in front of the Public Utilities Commission.
Wow. I mean, hearing that.
And that's for all of us.
Hearing that information from an all-electric city, that's the conversation. That's shocking. It's just, it's a big pill to swallow. Is there been any more insight on that? I mean, I know that's not your wheelhouse, but I know, you know, you're on it. So the driving force, I mean, just typical costs going up?
So they are claiming that this is because of wildfires. And I'm going to tell you personally, I'm very suspect of that. And I'll give you a perfect example. If you recall, about six years ago, they shut down San Onofre. That was Southern California Edison's, one of their primary sources of clean energy, and they had to go replace it up on the market. We did not have those rate increases during that time.
Right.
So when I look at Edison International's dividend record, it used to be 33 cents per share 10 years ago. That jumped up to 63% per share.
Goodness gracious.
It hasn't gone down in the last three years when we've had wildfires. So I would say I'm suspect to the intentions of the rate increase. So from our perspective, we have been sending letters to the governor, to our electeds, to all electeds, to the Public Utilities Commissioner, Executive Director, which I understand is in flux at the moment because, especially during this time of COVID, we can't afford it, and I'm sure the residents of Canyon Lake can't either.
Yeah, that's, wow. Open up a whole nother window. Thank you so much for the information.
After that great news.
Yeah, I know, it's just, you know, and we need that information, you know? We need to be on top of it. I mean, we've looked at, you know, power suppliers before, different entities, and maybe we might have to look at it once again if this is truly going to impact. I mean, that is an absurd amount of money. 38% on your bill that you get right now? I got neighbors calling me regularly, can't believe how high it is, and just think of 38% increase. So thank you so much for the information. I'm glad that we're getting ahead of it a little bit. It's important, so, especially for Canyon Lake.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay, thank you so much. We'll see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anna, for helping me.
Thank you. See you on the 7th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving along, we have, from the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association, Board Treasurer, Jeanne Odell is on the line. Give me one second, and we'll get her on the line. Hi there. You're on speaker, and the council can hear you now.
Perfect. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I will be speaking for Chris Pollan tonight, he is unable to join us. So a quick little update from the POA. Our board meeting is March 9th at 6:00 PM. We're going to be approving our budget at that time for '21, '22, and we'll also be looking at numerous rule changes to be read and/or approved. And because, of course, we like to keep it interesting for our partners in the city, we have an issue regarding rights to display flags. It's been a hot topic, as I know you're all aware. Jeremy's rubbing his head right now. It grew out of an attempt to clarify what a political sign was, but we will be focusing our efforts and rules on what an election sign is. So that's the effect from the POA. Any questions on anything from the POA?
No questions. I think that that information may be very welcome from the citizens of Canyon Lake.
My only comment is that, did you hear the statement about the electrical costs going up, Jeanne? I mean, it's something the POA should be concerned about. I'm not sure exactly what we can do to respond, but we do have a voice, the POA and the city.
I do think, yes, I made a note to that effect, to, one, make sure that it's been realized in our budget projections, as well as perhaps there's a partnership that could be formed with the city and how we can attempt to address the issue.
Okay. Anything on the Property Owners Association front? Jeanne, while I have you on the line, can we get an update for the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, actually, that was going to be, I'm putting on my chamber hat now, and I do have an update. We have the installation of our officers for our Board of Directors on Thursday, February 25th, and thanks to Kasich Mayor Castillo, she swore us all in, so we are now official. We had our first member event, which was a virtual happy hour by our Director of Member Events, Joseph Acapris, put that together, and I think that was very successful as well. We had about 25 participants, because, of course, it had to be virtual. And we are launching our business bingo, thanks to the efforts of Sonia Kent, our Director of Community Events. And I'm pleased to announce that the city has a square on our first card, and it's basically take a picture in front of City Hall, post it on our social media, and then that qualifies as a square marked in for the bingo card. So the city is featured on our first bingo card, and I do want to thank the city as well for joining the chamber.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having me to the installation, I appreciated that, and you're right, it was a great event. Any questions or comments for the chamber? No?
Keep up the great work.
Thank you. It's exciting. Our membership is growing in leaps and bounds, and we've got people returning that were previous members, as well as brand-new members, so it's very exciting to me.
It is very exciting to all of us. We appreciate your efforts, and they do not go unnoticed.
Yeah, we have a great Board of Directors, so it's not me, it's all, everybody.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Jeanne, we appreciate your calling.
Thank you. Talk to you soon.
Talk to you soon.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Meeting, or, blah, moving on, meeting. Moving on to public safety, Lieutenant, you're going to come back up here, right, Lieutenant Ralph?
I didn't really come up in the first place, but-
Right.
Almost made it.
You were invited.
I was invited. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, City Council Members, and City Staff. I have two reports tonight that I'm going to present to you. I have the public safety report for the month of March covering February, and then I'm just going to give an overview of 2020 and give you those stats compared to five years. During the month of February, deputies at Canyon Lake responded to or generated 308 calls for service, which is down 79 calls from January's 387. Also during the month of February, there were eight Part I crimes reported in the city of Canyon Lake. That was three assaults, one burglary, three thefts, and one motor vehicle theft. Also during February, deputies made two public intoxication arrests, wrote two traffic citations, made two DUI arrests, and investigated six traffic collisions, and overall, made 18 arrests.
Okay.
Questions on that?
How does 18?
18 arrests, are they due to outstanding warrants?
Some are outstanding warrants. Quite a few of those were drug charges. Some of those were related to some of the crimes where we made arrests, and some were made for prior month crimes-
Okay.
-where we actually had investigations and ended up arresting them. That's why you're seeing those numbers go up, we're starting to do quite a bit in the city.
Okay, thank you.
I have some questions, but maybe after your next report?
Okay.
Anyone else on this report? Okay.
Okay. Then I have a statement, I don't know if you have it in front of you, from our new captain. I know he talked to you real quick, I'll just briefly read here. "On behalf of the dedicated members of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and Lake Elsinore Station, I am honored to present the annual report for 2020. This report details a sampling of the remarkable accomplishments made by your exceptional staff of the department who provide the highest level of service to your community. Our engaged community-supported city council and dedicated department members have made positive impacts throughout the city of Canyon Lake. We are dedicated to enhancing public safety through trust, community partnership, and service of itself. The department's efforts to combat criminal activity and address quality-of-life issues are at the forefront of our daily efforts to make the city of Canyon Lake a better place to live, operate a business, and visit. We are committed to continually evaluating our services to ensure we are meeting the needs of the community in the most effective manner possible. Lake Elsinore Station looks forward to providing public safety services that exceed expectations in 2021. It is honored to serve the city of Canyon Lake and to lead the men and women of Lake Elsinore Station in our continued efforts in protecting and providing the best service for your community." And I'm going to skip down to overall Part I crimes for 2020. Part I crimes are those first crimes that I had mentioned on that report, on the prior report, and you'll see that we had 102 Part I crimes overall in 2020. If you look at all of my monthly reports, sometimes it's a little bit higher if you add it up, only because I'm going off of our data warehouse data from the county and having to go through each call and look it up. This report here is what's reported to FBI.
Gotcha.
That is actual crimes in your city. So we had 102 in 2020. That's up from 89 of 2019. 2018, we had 114, 133 in 2017, and 2016 was 152. So you can see a big decrease, even though we had a little bit of an increase this year. Property crimes for 2020, we had seven burglaries, 58 thefts, 24 auto thefts, no arsons. Total property crimes are 89. That's up slightly from 2019, but down from the prior years, all the way down to 2016.
People staying home, a lot more activity.
Yes. One thing that is increasing that we are noticing is thefts, just your basic petty thefts, as well as a few more stolen vehicles than we've had in the past. So we're on top of that, and that's a few of those 17 arrests we're talking about. We've actually arrested a few individuals for thefts and burglaries. So hopefully, with those arrests, we'll start seeing more of a decrease on that, but it's just slightly up. Violent crimes are down. No homicides, we do show two rapes here, but those are, it could be any sexual assault crime, which is under that, and the two that I looked at were actually, they were known suspects, they weren't just random rapes. Robberies, no robberies. We had 11 aggravated assaults, which I thought that would be up, but it's actually down. And total violent crimes is only 13, so that's down quite a bit. We had one fatal collision, we had 11 injury collisions, 62 non-injury collisions, and 13 non-injury hit-and-runs. So that's, fatal collision's up 100%, only because I think that's the first one we've had in a while. Other collisions are about even, stay about the same per year. And total costs for service were $5,520 in the city. We wrote 47 citations, 127 arrests, and 18 DUI arrests for 2020. Looking at response times, in 2020, down 3% for Priority I crimes, down 23% for Priority II crimes, down 7% for Priority III, and 27% for Priority IV. So your response times are going down a little bit, and I think that's mainly because with the Lake Elsinore Station, we have, if we have, if we need additional deputies to respond because we have multiple calls, they're responding in, so just cuts back on that time a little bit. And besides that, that's all I have for that report, if there's any questions.
I can start. So we had some, we had a coffee chat today with citizens in Canyon Lake, and there was some really good feedback in terms of the professionalism and the response times, like you've mentioned. We did have a good conversation about the difference between vehicle burglary and unlocked car theft. Is there a way we can get more information to push out to the citizens of Canyon Lake about the 9:00 PM routine? Locking all your-
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Because, not necessarily just locking up, but don't leave anything of value in your car. That's when the crimes of opportunity happen. Every community has it. You have people walking around at night, riding bicycles and looking into cars to see if there's anything there, and they'll smash a window and they'll take it, they'll check the car, see if it's open. If it's open, they're going to rummage through it. Leave your garage door open, things are going to get stolen.
Okay.
It happens everywhere, but yeah, we'll push something out, just to remind everybody.
Okay. Another question I had was, do we have an ETA on online reporting for Canyon Lake?
That's coming online pretty quick, countywide.
Okay.
I don't have a date, but I know it's real close.
Great.
So I will, next month, I will get you a date on that.
Okay.
That is going to cut back quite, to response times also.
I think that would be a great service for our residents, especially since people are home and have more access to maybe internet and social media.
Yes.
And then, we're very excited about the volunteer program. Do you have any kind of update on how many volunteers we have? Any Canyon Lakers doing the volunteer program?
Right now, we have four in the background process, looking for more, but I'm waiting to hear back, and that's just a long process. It takes a few months for it to get completed. Once it gets completed, then we'll be online, and we'll start, we'll kick it off, start doing some patrols.
Okay. My last question is, have you disqualified Jeremy Smith?
I was going to mention he's in the background, but I haven't received any phone calls.
Give me a call. Just kidding. Anyone else have questions or comments?
I do have one question. We've talked about this before in regards to our hotel that we have here, and this got brought up again in a discussion. What are other cities doing, you know, like Lake Elsinore, or, you know, some of, maybe Hemet, San Jacinto, some of these other cities? I know Hemet has their own police department, but have you seen any city involvement on decision-making, helping with problem, you know, hotels, or, you know, duplexes, or issues where, you know, there's problem child, if you want to say, and how they're addressing it?
Yes, most cities have a problem-oriented policing team. Obviously, Lake Elsinore has a six-man team, and if they're having an issue, they just go deal with it. They do operations, prostitution stings, you know, drug stings, those type of things at those hotels. So that's something we could look at, maybe in the future if we need to, but I know our guys are on top of it, they know what's going on.
Yeah, I know you guys, you know, we asked this a few months ago, and you really put some extra time and energy into it, and really gave us back some good statistics. I know that Councilmember Green really pushed hard for some answers on what was happening, but, you know, we're just, you know, COVID has really taken out the community aspect of being able to talk to other colleagues in other cities, and I'm just wondering if you had some any insight on some of the things that, you know, they're dealing with, so I appreciate that.
That's mainly what it is. I'm working on something right now to try to bring in a county team and do something.
That'd be good.
So we're working on it.
Thank you so much. Jordan?
I'd just like to comment, thank our new Captain Leah for this report. I don't remember getting such a comprehensive report in the past, an annual like this. It's very helpful and very well-prepared, so thank you very much for that.
We'll do it every year, and hopefully add more to it.
Well, I hope it's all good stuff that you have.
Exactly.
I hope it's all good stuff.
Okay. Anything, oh, Dan?
Yeah, I'm encouraged by your response times. I know that sometimes, to me, that's one of the biggest measures. You can't necessarily control what the criminals are doing, but you can control your response time, and this is encouraging. Second question is, is this report available online? Is this something maybe the city could just pop online as an option? Chris, is this report something we could put online?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And, Mr., Captain Leah?
No, he had to leave.
Oh, he had to leave, oh. I just want to encourage him to get together with the POA security so that they're all functioning on all eight cylinders. I think there might be a meeting next week, hopefully he can be a part of that.
Yes.
And that'll be a good opportunity for them to meet, because the community patrol here is a huge part of what we do to keep crime down, and working together's got to be just very important for both sides, so.
Yeah, and we've got some things we're going to be working on.
Okay.
Possible getting a radio from them so they can have access immediately to our deputies and back and forth, so we're working on a few things to-
That radio would be amazing, that's just, makes me very happy.
Yeah.
Happy council. That's great. Anything else?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you. We are lucky to have Battalion Chief Jeff Roberts here today, too, to present on fire. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Jeff Roberts, I'm the Lake Elsinore Battalion Chief, also a Canyon Lake resident. I'm standing in for Chief Barnett. In February statistics, in the city of Canyon Lake, we ran a total of 66 calls in the city. Two false alarms, one hazardous materials call, 55 medical calls, one others, five PSAs, two traffic collisions. Fire Station 94 from Lake Elsinore came into the city 24 times in the month of February. Station 5, Coyle Valley in Menifee, came in a total of seven times, and Fire Station 60, a total of 35 calls, for a total of 66 calls for the month of February. There was only one call that was over 10 minutes at the very end of Longhorn, and Engine 60 was not in quarters at the time. And-
Chief, how many calls did 60 go outside the city, like in the county area?
Yeah, that I didn't, they didn't give me those statistics. That is something I wish I would have known.
That's Greenwald and-
Correct, right outside the city limits, but several, I know, they were, I know for a fact that I was on at least six or seven fires in the Greenwald area in the month of February that I did see there, so.
That'd be helpful for us to have the complete stats, in-city, out-city.
Correct.
So we kind of see response pattern, because right now, the response pattern with 94s and 5s gives us really good coverage, but we're looking to start our own departments, so we actually need the numbers, so.
Okay. I will make sure to push that up. Any further questions? Awesome, thank you.
No, we're happy that you were able to attend, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Code enforcement, we have Senior Code Enforcement Officer Ruby Manzano present.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and Councilmembers. So not a whole lot of activity last month, but I did want to touch on two points here. BLM, we still have an increase in vehicles, dirt bikes, and UTVs, and as it continues to get warmer, that's going to increase a lot more. Our BLM sign was vandalized out there. Our code enforcement officer cleaned it up, and our BLM ranger is actually replacing the plexiglass that's on there, because it's already really damaged from gunshots and graffiti. And then there was an abandoned boat out there. We were going to tow it, but the BLM ranger will be picking it up with the cleanup that he's going to be doing, so we're waiting on that. If it doesn't get done fast, then we'll just go ahead and tow it. And then, since we've adopted the vacation rental ordinance, we started a project, and we found so far 13 vacation rentals that were sent notice violations, just this week.
Wow.
Okay. And that's it. It'll be great.
I've got a question, Mayor, let's go ahead. Go ahead, Larry. On 13 violations, what are you finding?
Well, we're finding them on Airbnb and VRBO. So we're sending them a notice violation letter, letting them know that they need to register as a residential rental, and it has to be the 30 days minimum in order to be able to rent that out.
So on, on the home inspection program, we tabled that until the COVID situation changes.
Correct.
So, okay. And I think that was all, I had something else, but you know what? I didn't write it down, so therefore it's gone.
I noticed another code enforcement officer. Do you want to introduce?
So this is our newest code enforcement officer, Marlin Johnson.
He's kind of new to the neighborhood. Come on up. Come on up.
Who's this guy? Where'd he come from? Hi. Welcome back to the city of Canyon Lake.
Thank you very much. Yes. I didn't come from very far away, apparently, next door. I must say, I really appreciate the warm welcome that I've gotten from all of the council, the city staff, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and even the residents via social media. I'm amazed, I'm pleased very much. And I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome aboard. Great to see you.
Ruby, are we still doing the non-running vehicles and multiple cars parked in driveways if they're-
Inoperables, you mean?
Inoperables.
Yes, yes. We started, we're, we're now going out there more proactively after a lot of those inoperables. In fact, this week, we started.
I got one with six, six vehicles.
Okay, we'll talk.
They haven't moved in a long time. Okay, thank you.
I had a question in regards to the vacation rentals. The way that they're advertised on VRBO and Airbnb, are they, you know, because you can categorize weekend rentals, how much that would be, weekly rentals, monthly rentals. Are these 13 offenders, have they identified how long they're renting or those categories? So we have them, you know, evidence of that?
So we do print out the printout from the VRBO and Airbnb, just to have as evidence. But until we hear from them, we won't have a lot of information on, you know, what really is going on.
Okay. I just know that, and maybe this is a question for our city manager and possibly city attorney. I know that when we, and Dale, actually, you were on the board when we passed this ordinance and we got, you know, your, your board was very receptive, you know, and the fact that we took this on because it was a serious issue within the POA. Is there any way that we can partner with the POA on this and they can identify, because they have to issue passes for those properties? And that was the big concern that the POA had, you know, with, with allowing non-paying members into the community. And now that we have an ordinance in place and we're monitoring activity online for VRBO and other sites, has there been conversations with the POA on maximizing that exposure, working with them as a partnership on some of these issues?
We have not discussed that. I'm not sure that's something that the city manager would want to-
Yeah, I guess I would just say if the POA has a way of identifying who's in violation of this ordinance, then we'd be very happy to accept that information. You know, if, if they have a way to track these short-term rentals, that'd be fantastic. I'd like to know that.
Yeah, I just, you know, for, for a guy who owns rental property and, and plays in this market, we're not on the, we're not at the property that often. So, you know, mail and everything else, it's not a priority. But, you know, being able to say, hey, look, this is not allowed anymore. Here's the ordinance. This is updated. It has to be a 30-day rental or more. We're no longer doing short-term, you know, and then working with the POA and saying, hey, is this, are they actively doing this? Because if the course is to send them notification, what's next? What's the fine process? What'd we come up with? Was it $1,000?
And a misdemeanor.
It was a misdemeanor too. So my point is this, it's, you know, these 13 offenders, it's a, it's a big deal. I mean, it's, it's, we, we, when we passed the ordinance as a council, we made it pretty serious in regards to, I think it was a $1,000 fine. I think we, if I'm not mistaken, copied Temecula. And then we put in a misdemeanor if they did not, you know, follow suit with that. So if we're going to prosecute to that extent, then I really think working with the POA and getting all the information that we can to build our case, and maybe city attorney would, would help with this too, you know, so that way we're covering our bases here.
Sure. And, you know, in, in terms of working, you know, with the POA, they, they obviously have a good working relationship with the city. There, there are some documents that, you know, people have a privacy interest in. And so it's not something they can just turn over without the city employing some kind of process. But that's an ongoing conversation that the city has with them, a very respectful conversation.
Yeah, I remember that conversation, Mr. City Attorney, before we passed this ordinance. You know, I was working with Director Nathan on this in regards to what privacy they can and cannot give. And what was the understanding for me is, is once this ordinance is passed from a city standpoint, it changes things a little bit on being able to obtain some of that information.
It, it does affect our ability to get it. And then the other thing I would mention is that the POA forms related to rental of residential property have an explicit waiver and a notification that that information will be transmitted to the city. So there is a, a working relationship there. But like I said, it's the kind of thing where we, we just want to, you know, respect their legal obligations as well.
Question, there's no problem with sharing the Airbnb printed, you know, if they go, if each party goes to Airbnb and prints out their information, to me, that seems like pretty public information since it's a marketing.
I, I certainly have no issue with sharing information that's available on a public website with someone else who could obtain it. No, I don't see a problem with that.
It just, it would be odd to have, you know, a person in the city office 200 feet from somebody in the POA office, you know, doing the same thing every day. It's something to think about. I know that it's just always-
I would just say that we, we work together as much as we can. I think there's a good working relationship fostered by the city manager with, with the POA. And it's certainly something we can look forward to when we're enforcing this ordinance.
And then again, I'm sorry I'm spending so much time on this, but I believe when we were looking at the ordinance, didn't we only have like 23?
Yeah, there wasn't a whole lot.
Right? It was, I know it wasn't 50 or 70 or 80.
Right.
So when I look at this number and I see that we passed as a council a pretty serious ordinance and 50% are still advertising and being able to conduct or trying to conduct business in Canyon Lake, the message hasn't gotten out, in my opinion, you know, very clear, or at least the seriousness of the violation that they're taking on. So I think, you know, giving them as much information as possible, using our resources at the POA if possible as well, can, can only help our case and also give them a, you know, fair shot. Hey, look, here you go. This is what we have. And can you please? How long do we give them to respond?
We, let me, one second. He was the one that started doing this this week.
Okay. I guess it's my turn again. For the, approximately, the last year that I was working at POA, that was my responsibility to locate and notice the owners of the vacation rentals. So when I came over here, I was responsible for just basically bringing the list that's in here. Knowing the community like I do, I can look at a house on VRBO or Airbnb and pretty much tell you where it is in the community. I can look at the Google Maps and pinpoint the house, pull up the address, and that was what I did. Find that, working with the city of Canyon Lake, there's a bit more teeth than the association has. If their advertisement says 30-day minimum, they're no longer in violation. So I brought things that were not in violation with the POA to the city. So that's where those numbers jumped like they did.
Okay. And, and this, I guess this is why the, you know, since we spent this much time on it, I think this is the concern I have too, is if you change your rental to 30 days, but I know this because I'm on the sites with a few properties, you can have correspondence with future clients and they negotiate. They say, hey, look, I see that you're a 30-day minimum. Would you be willing to do a two or three week? We don't need 30 days. We need 21. Would you be willing to help us out with the price? Happens all the time. Airbnb don't have any rules and regulations on how you advertise and what you decide to do or not to do. So my concern is, is from, you know, a, a technology standpoint, looking at it, using social media and other sites, we see that they're in compliance, but behind the scenes, they're accepting rentals for two, three weeks. And I think the only way that we would be able to identify that is activity at the property or the use of the POA because they're issuing passes to guests for duration of three weeks, 10 days. And they have to do it, if it's a 21-day rental, they have to do it every 10 days because that pass expires after 10 days. So that's why I think it's extremely important if we do find some of these. And I would like to look at all the Airbnbs in Canyon Lake because I think this is the, the new category at which they're going to advertise to try to get people in. This council took it up. It was a very heated conversation. A lot of community members came to us and wanted this ordinance in place here. So I just want to make sure we're, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's here so people aren't utilizing the community that they shouldn't be.
That, that was actually one of our concerns, that we would get a lot of these owners to register for the 30 days. But like you said, if they have somebody that they've already known, then how do we go about that? So that's something we're trying to figure out. How do we get to see if they're really not still doing the whole vacation rental for a minimum of a weekend?
Yeah.
Counsel member- About the, the time limit we give them on the notices, if that is 14 days.
14 days to respond.
14 days.
And, and you addressed me. I'm, I'm a homeowner and I have my property up as a vacation rental and it says weekend rental. And then I get the notification. When I go online real quick, it takes me two seconds, I change it to a 30-day or a long-stay rental. And now I'm still at one of the only 20 homes in Canyon Lake, so I'm going to get bites because summer's coming, because 4th of July is very popular in Riverside County. So I'm still going to get people that are going to contact me asking about my property in Canyon Lake. You won't know whether or not I accept that or not because you just won't know. So that's my concern.
Right.
We're going to come back to exactly where we had it before, where people are going to have parties and there's going to be music playing across the lake and it's going to create an issue. And the ordinance, there's, they're going to try to find a way around it, so.
Right.
And my comment is, there, there's kind of two, two extremes on Airbnb. There's the, the ones you would never know as an Airbnb because they're pretty quiet and they have small groups. And then we have the other extremes, and we have them, and this is the bigger problem, where they, they, they have 75 people show up at the house or 50 people show up, the loud music. I, I'm pretty sure we have a history, at least in the city or the POA, of these particular houses. I'm not sure if the sheriff has that list or if they're aware of it. But it would be something that if they're not, that the sheriff could be made aware of that.
Absolutely.
There's nothing like the sheriff showing up and citing somebody to, to get some attention. So just so, again, it's communication awareness and, and there's no perfect way to catch them all. We get that. But you guys are smart guys. Marlin's going to bring some expertise on. I think, let's just move ahead.
All right. Sounds good. Mr. City Attorney, you look like you wanted to jump in.
I was just going to offer a helpful but cryptic response to the question of how do you catch the people who do exactly what the Mayor was talking about. I have used a methodology to demonstrate that people are renting for less than 30 days. I'm happy to share it with code enforcement and with you offline, but I don't want to give it away.
Yeah.
No, absolutely. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that I dragged this out. I just-
No, that's okay.
I'm just repeating what I'm hearing back from a lot of the people and all the memories came back and we passed this thing. So thank you so much for-
All the memories.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Okay. All right. Moving along to public comments. Are there any public comments?
We don't have any. I'm going to go ahead and read the public comment statement though. That's okay.
Please.
Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to submit their comment electronically by sending an email to publiccomment@canyonlakeca.gov. Please note that I will be accepting email comments during this meeting in real time. If you're commenting on an item on the consent calendar or on items not on the agenda, I will read the emailed submissions into the record during the public comments portion of the agenda. If you're commenting on a business item or public hearing, I will read the emailed submissions into the record at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. During this period of social distancing, electronically submitted comments should be no more than 250 words and include the person's name and agenda item number. We have no comments.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, can you please read the consent calendar statement?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Would anyone like to have a consent calendar item pulled? Hearing none. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent counter?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Aaron Krems.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Walte.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent counter.
Thank you. We are moving on to business items.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Can we take up item number nine first so we can allow our good friend over at CRNR to hit the road?
I have no objection to that. Does anyone else have an issue with moving out of order to item number nine? I believe we have a staff presentation on the discussion of SB 1383 mandatory organic waste reduction.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I will be giving the staff presentation on this item. So just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with here, this is an overview of SB 1383, which is the reducing short-lived climate pollutants in California. It relates essentially to organic materials, getting organic materials out of the waste stream for a couple of different reasons. One is to slow down climate change. And the other one is to reduce the amount of edible food that is being thrown out when a significant portion of the state's population is experiencing hunger. We'll be talking about the mandates that this imposes on the city, mostly to give you a preview because we are going to be bringing an ordinance to the city council at a future meeting so that this city is in compliance with those mandates. We do have our representative from CRNR here, who under the contract of the city is probably going to be the one that has to do a lot of these things. Sorry. So without much further ado, we're moving on. Organic waste is the largest waste stream in California. And when we're talking about organics, we're talking not just about food, but we're talking about things like green waste, wood waste, food waste, and then fibers like paper and cardboard. Organic waste is two-thirds of the waste stream, at least it was when CalRecycle gave me these numbers. We don't know exactly how much of that food stream is edible food versus food that is no longer edible. At least we didn't at the time. That's been subject to a significant study at the state level. Why do we care about organic waste? Well, the state cares about organic waste because organic waste creates methane gas, which the state considers a super pollutant, more powerful than carbon dioxide, and one of the drivers of climate change in the state of California. Next slide, please. Sorry, next slide, please. Sorry, I forgot I'm supposed to not do it on my computer. I'm supposed to point over to Tyler, who's helping me out. So what are the requirements here? So the regulations take effect from CalRecycle in 2022. And that, January 1st, 2022 is the date that the city of Canyon Lake has to have its ordinance on the books and in effect. It's a date that we have to have a significant other number of steps that we'll go through operating. And then state enforcement's going to take over a couple of years after that. Next slide, please. And so looking at the timeline here, we're currently in the two years of informal rulemaking. Rulemaking has effectively concluded at this point. So we do have the regulations. Those regulations are going to take effect on January 1st, 2022, like I discussed. And then essentially in the 2022 to 2023 period, that's going to be our time period as a jurisdiction where we're going to be doing studies. We're going to be evaluating. We're going to be working with our franchise hauler to get this program off the ground. And then on January 1st, 2024, the regulations are going to require that the city begin taking enforcement action. We'll talk about what happens if the city doesn't do that. I've been through it. It's not fun. Next date? Thank you. And so what are those things that we got to do by 2022? So one, we have to provide organics collection service to all of our residents and businesses. And this is the sort of three-can method that I'm sure a lot of people are familiar with. We have to establish an edible food recovery program. We have to conduct education and outreach. We have to look at our procurement and see if we need to be procuring things like compost for our city medians. And we need to look at capacity. So there's capacity provided by our franchise hauler to make sure that we have the capacity to deal with the organics recycling. to make sure that we have the capacity to deal with the, uh, organics recycling. And then in twenty twenty-four, like I've said a couple of times now, jurisdictions have to begin to take enforcement action against non-compliant entities throughout the community. So, just looking at sort of what these things talk about, uh, we're talking about organic waste collection. Uh, that means all organic waste, including green waste, food waste, like we talked about. Um, a lot of communities deal with this by having containers with prescribed colors. So that's usually gray and black for trash, green for organic waste, and blue for traditional recyclables. Um, there are going to be container labeling and monitoring requirements that we have to deal with. Uh, I've been in other jurisdictions that have this all completely backwards. Their trash cans are blue, their recycling cans are green, and honestly, I don't know which can to put things in. Uh, so the state says you got you got to label these a certain way. Uh, and then we need to begin assessing our current collection programs, looking at, are we doing a good job here? Um, and also, you know, looking at, are are people actually using the bins the way they're supposed to? Uh, number two, we need to establish, oh, you can go back, sorry, sorry. Uh, we need to establish, uh, an edible food recovery program for all tier one and tier two commercial edible food generators. So we don't actually have a lot of those in Canyon Lake. I'd be surprised. Tier one, these are like supermarkets, uh, grocery stores, food service distributors, and wholesale food markets. Uh, tier two are restaurants with two hundred and fifty or more seats or greater than five thousand feet, hotels with onsite food facilities and two hundred or more rooms, uh, health facilities with onsite food, large venues, large events, uh, or local education facilities with onsite food. So I would say, I would be surprised if we had any tier one or tier two, um, in the city, but the fact of the matter is, we have to go look and document the fact that we do or don't, and then we need to come up with a plan for how we're going to be addressing them. Um, three, we need to conduct education and outreach to all these generators that we have or don't have. Uh, number four, we're going to be required to procure certain levels of compost, uh, renewable gases, transportation fuels, uh, electricity, uh, and and other items. Uh, we're going to be getting those, uh, from CalRecycle what they want us to do. My anticipation is they're going to make us drop compost along Railroad Canyon Drive. Uh, let's see. Then we're also going to be, uh, needing to, um, secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity. And then the last one, and this is the one that's probably going to be the biggest headache for the city manager and for our franchise hauler, is going to be, we're going to do monitor compliance and con- uh, conduct enforcement. And so this is just going to be another report that the city manager is going to have to make sure goes to some random state agency to make sure that we're complying with their new edict. Sorry, I shouldn't be editorializing so much.
Good, thank you.
I'm just, I'm imagining the email that I'm going to get in two years. All right. So, uh, obviously, this is going to have a lot of effects on a lot of different parts, so, uh, we can go to the next slide. Um, you know, City Council got to work with the city manager, uh, on implementing this. Uh, finance and legal, there's going to be financial implications for this. These state mandates aren't free. Um, there's a cost, and that cost, when it comes to solid waste, gets passed on to our residents in the form of fees. Uh, there's going to be legal implications, drafting ordinances, and then enforcing them, purchasing, procurement. Like I said, there's procurement mandates that we're going to have to comply with. Uh, Public Works is going to have, you know, to the extent we have a Public Works function, it's going to have to look at doing that procurement and, you know, we're talking about city vehicles, and we're going to talk about how we're, uh, fueling them. Uh, to the extent that we have public parks, we're going to have to look at how we are maintaining them. Um, yeah, so this this is going to have a lot of implications, even though it seems like it's just sort of a solid waste issue. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just going into detail a little bit here. Again, uh, we have a couple of different options here, and perhaps Alex, at some point, might want to jump up and tell us what the plan is, uh, from our franchise hauler, which of these three we're planning on implementing. Uh, if we don't have the three cans, uh, I know that some people find that annoying. I certainly don't enjoy taking three cans out to the street. Um, but having that source separation where the individual households are the ones separating that out, uh, can certainly be much easier, um, on downstream, uh, when we're having to separate them out. Uh, next slide, please. Um, when we're looking at the edible food recovery program, so this means that we need to make sure that there's actual capacity. Uh, we need to either establish the program, we need to make sure there's infrastructure in existence, and then we need to inspect our commercial generators for compliance. Make sure that, okay, we have this program where if you have edible food, it is being given to some, you know, program that can use it, and then we need to make sure they're actually doing it, which means that we're going to have inspections and reports and generating a bunch of paperwork. And again, I I would be surprised if we had that many actual generators within the community, but it's something we're going to have to look at. Uh, and the last sort of thought process on this is, we're going to be needing to do a lot of, again, education and outreach, and it's not just doing the education and outreach, it's documenting that you've done the education and outreach, so that when CalRecycle comes rolling around, you can say, look, we did our job. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so when we're talking about the education, like I said, uh, we need to provide print or electronic communication, so this is something that comes through the city, it can go through our franchise hauler, making sure we're sending these things out. And then following up with, uh, probably the biggest generators, to make sure that we, uh, are going to have compliance. Next slide. The procurement, so this is something that we're going to be addressing through city policy, and that is essentially creating a market, I think, for these, uh, recyclable materials. Uh, we're going to need to be looking at, uh, increasing, uh, our procurement of these types of materials, again, looking at things like compost, uh, other issues like that. Next slide, please. Uh, we're going to be dealing with planning. We're going to be probably looking at our model water efficient landscape ordinance, which you are familiar with, because we had a revisit of it, uh, not too long ago, and make sure that we have compost and mulch applications, again, creating the market for these materials. Um, and then we're also going to be looking at our construction, uh, debris requirements that we have, to see if we are, you know, actually getting these things recycled. Next slide, please. Uh, so, uh, in addition to requiring that we do all of this organic waste recycling, we're going to have to build the infrastructure. And by we, I mean our franchise hauler, uh, which, you know, is not cheap. Um, you know, these are pretty large, expensive facilities, and those costs will likely be, uh, included in future rates. Next, please. I even found a nice CRNR picture to put in here. Next slide. So, uh, again, to sort of give everyone an idea of what is going to be coming down the pipe, uh, we are going to be bringing forward at the next meeting or so, uh, an ordinance addressing these requirements. Uh, we will then, over the next two years, be doing compliance monitoring and education efforts, and then beginning in twenty twenty-four, we will begin doing compliance reviews, root reviews and inspections, issuing notices of violation, if we have any, and then penalizing any violators. I do have a couple more slides, but I think you generally get the idea, unless there are questions, um, and I'm happy to to end it there.
That, right, does.
And this is actually going to go for CRNR. We already have the three.
Mm-hmm.
Bins in place in our community. Uh, some time ago, you also distributed to different households, uh, household garbage pails, I'll call them for a better term, so that we weren't taking, uh, waste and running it down the garbage disposal line. So how far out of compliance are we with this, uh, particular new recycling process?
Great question. Um, good evening. My name is Alex Brekovich. I'm with CRNR Incorporated, um, and thank you for the invitation to come and speak. Thirteen eighty-three has, uh, been our nightmare for the last.
Thank you.
Two and a half years. Let me, let me, let me put it to you in this, these terms. This is the law that was passed in twenty sixteen. Six pages. This is the regulations that came with that law. A hundred and twenty-seven pages. You can imagine how prescriptive these regulations are. This is changing our industry.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's the biggest change we've had in thirty-some years in this business. We quite honestly fought this for the last three years. And if the language that was originally in these regulations was still in here, your mind would be blown up. It was ugly. Between ourselves, our lobbyists, our trade organizations, uh, we fought hard to take a lot of the stuff that was in here out. Unfortunately, we couldn't take it all out, so what you saw is what's left. We're still, you know, fighting up in Sacramento to try and and help, um, mitigate some of these issues, um, and we're speaking on behalf of our cities, because every regulation, every requirement costs money. And you and I are going to pay for it at the end of the day. So, a lot of the things that are up there that are required, um, you know, CRNR's already made the investment. We made an eighty million dollar investment in our anaerobic digester three years ago. It's the only digester of its kind in the United States of size and technology. It's right here in Riverside County. Very few cities can, you know, say that. Uh, a lot of cities that we use or that we have in Orange and LA counties, they don't know what they're going to do. This is ten months away, and they don't have a place to take their organics, at least not a local place. The largest hauler in North America is planning to take their organics from Riverside County up to Tulare County, to give you an idea of what this is causing. So it's it's quite a challenge, and and we're still, like I said earlier, we're still battling, we're still trying to get some things changed. We're still, uh, there's there's two spot bills. Actually, I just heard today, one of those spot bills is gone. There's one spot bill left in Sacramento. We're legislators trying to get this pushed back for at least a year, the deadlines. Um, not that that's going to help a lot, but, you know, it's something. Uh, we we were pushing to try and get it pushed back further, um, to give cities time to get get ready for this. It's been coming. So, um, the way it breaks down for us is, your collection system's already set. You got three carts, one for trash, one for recycling, one for green waste. In terms of the color, you haven't, until we pushed that back, that was supposed to be done in the next, originally, the next three years, that would have been a multi-billion dollar investment, uh, for the state of California. Um, and now the language reads that, um, you have to have all the same color containers, but I think it's twenty thirty-six. We got plenty of time for the containers, and as we replace them, we put in the colors that the state wants. Same thing with the labeling. Um, we'll we'll put the labels on as we change the containers. That's fine. On the procurement side, um, we have been in discussions with CalRecycle on that. We have been arguing that all of our cities have made the investment, right? You guys are all paying a little bit more every month to take your green waste and your food waste to our AD facility. What we do with that material is, we turn it into high compost, uh, rich compost, and we produce RNG, right? Um, we've been arguing with CalRecycle that that's it. That should be it. You should not have the city on the hook for anything else. Uh, we think we've made some pretty good strides in that area, and we're hopeful that all of our cities that contract with us will not have to worry about the procurement side of it. Not a guarantee, but we think we're pretty close. Uh, we've got them convinced that the process and the investment that we all made, uh, will work long-term. Because at the end of the day, that's what we all want, right? We don't want the stuff going in the landfill, and it's not. So you've got the collection system in place, you have an end market already in place, um, you you've got the procurement, I believe, taken care of. The edible food recovery is an open issue. All of our cities are getting ready to take that on. Um, it's not necessarily a hauler issue, uh, that's a city issue. Um, and that's usually done with code enforcement. Um, you know, we can assist, obviously, um, but, uh, generally speaking, we're not an edible food recovery company, and we're a trash company. So we'll obviously work with the city and make sure that you you're in compliance, and if there's information needed out of our customer data banks, we'll make sure to produce that and work with you on that. The biggest question marks for us are the sampling requirements, the auditing requirements, and the reporting requirements. It was a big three, that we can't get our hands around, our arms around, to figure out what that's going to cost. The way it's written in the documentation right now, um, we may have to hire, you know, upwards of, we're guessing between thirteen, fifteen and thirty people to, uh, start doing the reporting, um, not the reporting, the auditing and sampling for all of our cities. And what we would do is take that cost and then allocate it to each city, depending on the size of the city. And we feel that's the fairest way to do it and the cheapest way to do it. And so the reporting, uh, that's a whole different animal in to itself. Uh, as a matter of fact, we are in the market to hire an individual to be our thirteen eighty-three recycling compliance coordinator, is what we're calling it, and that person will manage all of thirteen eighty-three for us and work with each one of our jurisdictions to make sure they're in compliance. Um, so, we think, uh, you know, we think we're going to try and minimize the impact to all of our cities because of the investment that we made literally fifteen years ago, and just came online about three years ago. We're very, very fortunate to have that already in place. Couple of the pictures up there, have it up there. Um, so it's it's one of those things that we, we're breathing a sigh of relief that it's it's there for all of our cities now. So just just to give you a couple of stats, um, we hired a couple of people a couple of years ago, um, because we saw this coming with thirteen eighty-three, to get the city of Canyon Lake into compliance, right? What does that mean? That means you have to go to every single one of your commercial customers and get them signed up for service, because when CalRecycle comes out, they're going to ask, Mike, well, how many customers do you have signed up for commercial organics? So your numbers are actually looking really good. The, uh, commercial recycling side of the world, um, we have over ninety-five percent of your customers signed up. Um, on the commercial organics side of the picture, we have over fifty-five percent of your customers signed up. Um, so there aren't that many left to do here in Canyon Lake, and we're more than confident that we'll get that done here in the next few months. Um, so, you know, fortunately, um, like I said, we we started doing this about a year and a half ago, hiring our our two folks to come out and start hitting the pavement and and making sure that we're not doing this ten months left, you know, and start it right now. We'd be in trouble if we started right now. So, so you're looking good in terms of those numbers, um, and, uh, you know, that that's kind of where we're at at this point. Um, we're still, uh, you know, working with CalRecycle on some some other issues, um, but we think Canyon Lake is going to be in good shape. Um, we've just got some, uh, you know, things to button up and tighten up. Um, if you recall, last year, your rate increases included some extraordinary adjustments for eighteen twenty-six and three forty-one. This year, we do not plan to come to you with any additional increases, other than the CPI, standard CPI, because we don't know what this is going to take, and we won't know that until twenty twenty-two. So we don't want to come and say, hey, we're going to need another ten percent, and we don't know what that number's going to be. So next year, twenty twenty, July of twenty twenty-two, is probably when you're going to see some extraordinary adjustments for thirteen eighty-three. We just don't know what those numbers are yet. But you got a good head start, and to your point, Larry, um, you know, we we're fortunate to have some things already in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Jordan.
Pointy Hills, don't they have a recycling plant also?
They do. They do. Um, so they had, they they built a, uh, they closed the landfill. That was the world. That was the world's largest landfill, Pointy Hills landfill. Uh, they closed that, I don't know how many years ago, maybe five or ten years ago, built a huge material recovery facility. But again, you're talking about an area of the county of Los Angeles. There's no way that that facility is gonna be able to address the needs of LA County. So LA County, Orange County, we, we have no idea how they're gonna address this thing. They, they just don't have the capacity. And capacity is one of the requirements in, in this regulation as well.
I understand that, uh, one-third of all trash is organic.
Yeah, roughly, roughly. The majority of that being food waste, green waste. Uh, the one thing that we fought from the beginning is their, their definition of food, of, of organics is very, very broad. So we, we've been fighting that, but we didn't win that battle.
Well, between you and Stephen, you've stolen my, uh, SCAG report or... All those statistics I've had. You know, there's no sense hearing them again. Uh, other than, uh, by 2025, there's supposed to be a seventy-five percent reduction in all organic.
That's true.
Didn't that be met?
Well, we'll see when we get there, you know? We were supposed to be at fifty percent by 2020. They're nowhere close to fifty percent by 2020.
What do you think Tulare County's gonna say?
Well, here's the interesting, here's the irony of the whole thing. So we're doing this to reduce air pollution.
You're right, but...
They're gonna be sending organics, green wastes, from Riverside County all the way up to Tulare in transfer vehicles.
What about the fuel?
What does that do? What does that do? I mean, it's just crazy. It, it's just crazy. Earlier you were talking about electricity. We've been fighting that one too. Uh, an electric trash truck is...
Are you part of that requirement in 2030 to be electric?
Well, we hope not.
Yeah.
Uh, because we made a huge investment in renewable natural gas.
Yes, you did.
And, um, you know, a, uh, all of our trash trucks, almost all, I shouldn't say all, almost all have been converted to natural gas. And we, now we have renewable natural gas, which CARB itself has said is cleaner burning than electricity on a carbon intensity standpoint. So CARB is, you know, trying to say that we have to go to electric trucks. Well, there's no such thing in this world as an electric trash truck. They just don't make them, there's nothing. The technology isn't there. And, um, they have estimated that a trash truck, electric trash truck, will run about nine hundred thousand dollars. A CNG truck today, you can pick up for three sixty. When I started the business, a diesel truck was a hundred and twenty.
Right.
So, so you can see where this is, you know, it's just nuts. It's just nuts. I'll, I'll give you, I don't know if you saw this or not, but I'll, I'll, if you don't mind, add a few to the concept, huh? Uh, this was, this was a survey that the California League of Cities did. And you can see the, uh, the results of their survey after talking to, um, a number of cities up and down the state of California and, uh, how they feel about the implications of 1383 and the costs associated with 1383. We've been saying this, you've, you've heard me say this up here for the last two years. This is not gonna be cheap, right? So, um, it'll be an interesting next few months to see how, uh, how this is rolled out and the impact, uh, that it will have. Like I said, most of the stuff that's in 1383, we've already, uh, fortunately have, you know, an answer for. It's, uh, it's some of those unknowns, the, the sampling, the requirement sampling and auditing and reporting.
Alex, I got a quick question for you.
Sure.
COVID, you know, very interesting times, being the pandemic and all. Have you, have you seen an increase of trash on the residential side significantly? I don't know, you know, you talked a little bit about the postponement of possibly getting another year on this thing. Are they taking that into consideration too, that, you know, the pandemic has just completely changed the trash world? There's just no sympathy. Yeah. What are you guys doing to, have you made changes at the plant in regards to all the different, you know, the types of trash that you're getting now, just...
No, it's just a lot more of it.
Just, just a lot more?
Yeah, yeah.
Those dang Amazon boxes?
The impact we saw in our business, and this was just not us, it was the entire industry, back in March when the pandemic hit, um, and everybody shut down, literally our phones started ringing off the hook the next day, council service, reduced service, from all the businesses, right? Because they're gonna shut down. So all of a sudden, we see our revenue just phew, take a dive on the commercial side. On the residential side, everybody went home. What were they doing when they went home? Well, they're gonna clean out the shed and the bath, the garage, and everything else. And all of a sudden, our disposal costs went through the roof because now you got more disposal to throw out. So it's, it's been a very interesting, you know, one of in a lifetime type of situation. Um, the, the trash volume has come down, but it's leveled out. It's not what it was before. So we're, we're, we're just gonna see where, where this thing heads, you know? And, uh, hopefully the, the issues with the pandemic will mitigate themselves and people go back to work and, you know, life comes back to full, full...
What's your decrease on commercial right now? Has it come back significantly, or is it still...
Not, not completely, no.
You're still, you're still down quite a bit?
We're still down quite a bit.
Okay.
So, the, the big thing I think we're gonna see this year, uh, when CalRecycle comes around and reviews 2020, is, um, the, uh, the processing of recyclables. We had to shut down our lines, um, because in the beginning, we didn't know, right? So everybody shut down their material recovery facilities. And then we had the situation with, you know, the added unemployment, and people didn't wanna come back to work, and it was a nightmare. So, uh, the, the, the recycling diversion this year is gonna be in the, in the tank because we just, a lot of the material went to the landfill. It just didn't get recycled, uh, for a lot of reasons. And so I think that's the big thing CalRecycle's gonna have some, you know, heartache over. What we have heard from LA cities that have gone through their process already or their review with CalRecycle, it's all about 1383. Are you prepared, do you, oh, the ordinance, we talked about the ordinance earlier? We're telling all of our cities, get your ordinance done as soon as possible. Because once your ordinance is done, A, you can tell Recycle, CalRecycle, it's done, right? That makes you look good. But B, we're anticipating having to amend our franchise agreement again. And you have to amend the franchise agreement based on the ordinance. So the sooner you can get your ordinance done, we just had this call, the same issue this, this afternoon with, um, another city that we have, and we told them the same thing. You know, you guys gotta get your ordinance done as soon as possible. So, Mr. City Attorney?
It is being drafted.
It's just one of those things that, you know, CalRecycle really is looking at hard right now.
Any additional questions or comments from council?
Appreciate you, Alex.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. If there's any times that you guys have some questions on this, by all means, I'm always available.
Is there any public comment on this matter?
No public comments.
So it looks like we are looking for direction to staff at this point.
I, I, I think that, uh, if you want to give direction, the direction would be draft the ordinance and bring it back.
That works for me, anyone else?
No, I'm right there, draft it, make it rain. Let's get her done.
Any advice from CCNR on our ordinance would be appreciated. I, I would hope you would review it and give us some...
Absolutely.
I mean, we don't wanna put something that's gonna cost you or us, you know, millions of dollars where we could be, you know...
Yeah, and, and we've talked, I talked to my attorney this week, and, and we're starting to draft, uh, contract amendments. Um, and, um, we're gonna do it in such a manner where every city meets the compliance requirements, but at the minimal cost that we can get it to. So, um, that's, that's kind of our, our charge.
Good.
Okay.
And we know that you'll take extra care of us, Alex, 'cause you love Canyon Lake, so...
Of course.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, it was great seeing all of you.
Good seeing you, Alex. Be safe, all right?
All right, thank you.
Say hi to that family for me.
All right. Everyone okay, or do we need a break? Are we doing all right? Everyone all right? Okay. Trucking through and going back to item number seven, which is our report on the general plan housing element annual progress report. Staff presentation, um, on the line?
Yes, we're getting Jim Morrissey on the line, give me one second. Okay, you're on speaker, and the council can hear you now.
Good evening. I hope you're all well. Uh, I assume this is related to the general plan annual progress report, Anna?
Yes. Yes.
The, um, the item before you is focused on the, um, uh, housing element principally. Each year, there's a general plan annual progress report. And we've been doing lots of work over the last few years on our housing element. We were behind, we adopted a new housing element. We were required to adopt a midterm element. And, uh, on about September of this year, we're gonna be coming back before you for, uh, an updated housing element as part of what's referred to as the sixth cycle of the, uh, housing element. And the state has provided jurisdictions with specific, uh, reporting forms for the housing element. However, the, the general plan annual report obviously covers the general plan, which incorporates, uh, additional elements beyond the housing element. But, uh, to, to conclude on the housing element compo- uh, portion, uh, staff has provided you with some, uh, portions of that report which deal with the status of some of the, the programs. The other portions of the documentation required by the state have to do with identifying specific properties, their address, their assessor parcel number, and, uh, building permit number. And we're getting a few of those additional items together, uh, right now. The report is due April first, so we'll have that sent to the state prior to that. But I also wanted to mention with regard to the general plan, uh, in total, there's some general plan policies which, uh, relate to coordination with agencies such as, uh, that we do ongoing for MSHCP, WRCOG. And in fact, with WRCOG, I've had discussions with them, and we hope to utilize, um, a program that they're gonna be instituting, that will help us in our mapping for the, uh, upcoming housing element, as I mentioned, that we hope to have in front of you by, uh, September. Uh, we also stay attuned to whatever, uh, development projects we receive notice on from surrounding jurisdictions to see if they warrant any type of comments. And lastly, I wanted to just to praise you that we are working with the consultants for the town center specific plan. The city manager and I are gonna have a meeting with them, a Zoom meeting tomorrow to discuss visioning issues, uh, more, uh, large framework, uh, type goals, uh, plan and policy design, um, and not the intricate details that they will get into after that. Uh, so the, the recommendation to you this evening is to direct staff to file the annual progress report for last year with, um, California Department of Housing and Community Development. And I'll be happy to answer, uh, any questions. Oh, I, I did forget one thing. As part of, I apologize. For the, um, a- as part of the, uh, general plan work, we're also gonna be selecting a consultant to prepare, um, an updated safety element. We've received, uh, proposals from consultants to do that. The, the reason for the update is predicated on state law that when you update your housing element, you should update your, um, uh, safety element. So I am working with, uh, one particular consultant to get, uh, some updated information. And we hope to take action soon to hire a consultant to start that work as well. And that concludes the report.
Okay, thank you. Any council questions to Mr. Morrissey? No? Um, are there any public comment cards on this item?
No public comment.
So at this point, then, we would need a motion and a second to approve the report and direct staff to file.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Pretem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to business item number eight. This is a resolution regarding the amendment of the conflict of interest code of the city of Canyon Lake. And a staff presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna take over here. Uh, before you tonight, we have resolution number 2021-11, amending the conflict of interest code. This is something that's typically done every two years. Um, the last time we brought it to the council was actually last year in January. However, as the city continues to add positions and remove positions, it's important that we just continue to update the code. So, um, it's just your, your standard update. Um, we have, we've added the position of our fire consultant slash interim fire chief. Other than that, we just kinda cleaned up some of the positions that were on there. So if, uh, the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, staff is recommending the adoption of resolution number 2021-11.
Any questions by council of staff?
My only question, seems like we're gonna have to revisit this in probably about, uh, twelve months as we get the fire department up. Will that be impacting this? I, I'm good with what we have, I'm just saying.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I, it's not, I don't think it's necessary to wait the, the two years. I think as we go along and we continue to add these positions, we can definitely make those amendments. So, once we start the fire department, we'll take a look again. If it's significant changes, then it's probably something we'll bring back again next year.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. In regards to 700 forms, and I guess this would be directed to the city attorney, is this, is this particular ordinance dealing with elected officials as well for filing 700 forms?
Uh, I, I'd say yes and no. No, in the sense that your obligation to file Form 700 forms is not created by this resolution. It's created by state law.
Right.
Uh, yes, in the sense that I do believe we listed you anyway.
Yes.
So my, my question is, in regards to the council side of 700 forms, do we have an ordinance in place that discusses who can and who cannot fill out 700 forms?
Uh, let, let me, let me ask you to clarify that a little bit. Do, do you mean, is someone else filling it out for you?
Yes.
Uh, not, not that I'm aware of. Uh, that's certainly something, if you wanna give direction to staff, we can research.
I'm just, you know, when we're looking at, 'cause we're starting our own fire department, we're looking at so many different administrative programs in regards to paperwork and some of the languages that need to be put into place and not. So just covering all of our bases, um, you know, moving forward with making sure that, you know, we're addressing, you know, documentation that's being filled out by either the employee or the individual who's, um, holding certain, you know, criterias that this resolution would meet. I just don't know if this is the placeholder for that or not.
Uh, sure, I mean, we can, we can certainly discuss it further. As the city clerk alluded to, and, and we got another question on it, there will be future amendments to this code as we bring on more employees. One of the things about Canyon Lake that's kinda unique, as distinct from larger cities, is that you have few employees who wear a lot of hats. You know, what may be a tenth of Mike's job here is a full-blown position in a, in a larger city, just because of the amount of work that justifies that kinda thing. And so, you know, listen, we have one category here. As the city expands and you start getting other employees who maybe have less responsibility for financial decisions at the city, you know, I'm thinking things like, you know, line firefighters. Do we really need full disclosures from line firefighters?
Right.
No, right? And so I think that in addition, this is one of the things the city clerk has brought up, making sure that when we're doing this, we're looking at each of these positions and making sure that those disclosure categories, not only that the positions are listed appropriately, but the disclosures are, are appropriate to the position as well. And then if you would like us to also research that as we're doing it, you know, is there a way that we can address how these forms are prepared and submitted to the city? We can research that and look into it as well.
My purpose is, is, you know, looking at, and, and like I have employees myself who sometimes... My purpose is, is, you know, looking at, and like I have employees myself who sometimes use my assistant to fill out documentation, and that assistant should not be answering the certain questions that that employee is asking, because it's either personal or they don't want to get it wrong. So are we protecting ourselves from, you know, someone going to our chief or someone going to our city clerk and saying, hey, I'm filling out the 700 form. I need you to do this because this is over my head, or I don't know. That's my, that's my point. Are we addressing that in this particular ordinance?
Oh, I, so we, this is a policy, right?
Right, right.
It's not necessarily an ordinance. But I think we can absolutely look at addressing that in future versions that come back. Just making sure that, you know, the people who are signing these things are the ones who are making sure that everything in there is correct. Now, you know, to your point, you know, man, putting myself in the firing line here, I fill out a lot of Form 700s. I don't fill them all out myself. I do one of them, and then I have an assistant who goes through and copies that information over to each one. But it's my responsibility, when I sign it, to make sure that it is accurate before it goes to the city agency that I'm submitting it for. And so I think, you know, maybe we can put some language in here that, you know, just because someone else maybe assists you in filling this out, doesn't mean that you don't have responsibility to make sure it's accurate.
Also, the 700 form, though, is really focused on executive level and above, those who have influence on policy, budgeting, decision-making, procurement, where the rank and file, they just write it out. They don't have any ability to alter or change those policies. So I think the 700 form, really, that's the break-off line. I know I've filled them out for many years just because of my position, but none of my employees did.
No, you're absolutely right. And I think, I think that was kind of the point we were talking about before, which is, you know, with a, with a city this small and with, you know, very few staff who have very broad responsibilities, everyone's almost an executive-level staff member at the city as it's currently constituted. But as you start creating these operational departments, you're going to be finding more and more positions where it doesn't really make sense that they have all the disclosure categories or even any.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I just wanted to, brief comment to Mayor Protam Smith's point, which I appreciate that you brought up the point about, you know, whether or not we need a, a policy of some sort that addresses the filling out of the 700 forms. While, I mean, it certainly is not a legal issue to have someone assist you in filling out a 700 form, I would like to comment just briefly that, at the same time, we, we need to protect city staff and have kind of a firewall between city staff. If, if a member of the city council or anyone who needs to fill out a 700 form wants, wants to find someone to help them fill out that form, I think that's absolutely acceptable. But city, city staff, in particular the, the city clerk's office, that, that role is to be very neutral and to receive the form and to make sure that it's, you know, complete and to stamp it in and then to send it on. And so it puts the city clerk's office in a difficult spot if they're asked to, in essence, help fill out the form. And then if there ends up being an error in the form, that could, that could, there could be some liability there to the city clerk and to the city, which, which we really need to avoid. So I appreciate you bringing that up because it is something that I've been wanting to, wanting to mention.
Yeah, and that's my question to the city attorney, is that a separate entire, you know, we're not calling it a resolution, we're calling it a, what, an adoption of, I guess it would be a resolution, right?
Yeah, a resolution.
So a, a separate resolution that just protects, I mean, I'm just trying to think of these things now because we are growing and like our city manager has mentioned, starting our fire department, we're literally doubling, you know, our staff here at the city. So these type of things, especially with 700 forms, and I know when, when I'm going 100 miles an hour, I'm having my assistant do stuff for me, and I got to think twice sometimes when it comes with certain things. It happens to all of us. So I just want to make sure that we put something like that in place and bring it to this council so that we do protect staff members like our city manager and our city clerk and
Right.
and others. So we're not utilizing their detailed skills to, you know, help us fill out certain paperwork except maybe we shouldn't be, so.
No, I, I, I think the point's well taken, and, you know, I, I think, I'd also just like to draw a distinction between my personal assistant at my firm and the city clerk, who is not my personal assistant that I give assignments to. She, she is the city clerk of the city, and also the one, you know, charged with enforcement of these rules. And so it's a little hard to enforce a rule when you're the one filling out the forms perhaps for somebody else. So the point's well taken. We'll work on it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay. That being said, I would need a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021-11.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walte?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to adopt resolution number 2021-11.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our final business item tonight, which is the fire department startup update. We have a presentation, I believe, by our interim fire chief, Jeff Latendas. Welcome back. Staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council, city staff, Jeff Latendas, your interim fire chief. It's been 20 days. How's it look? It's a pleasure already working with the staff and the community, the different groups that I've had the ability to go out and interact with so far, learning how the Xerox machine works, how the coffee pot works. The coffee pot's actually more complicated than I've ever seen before. I'm learning all these different things so quickly. But some of the key milestones that we've accomplished so far in these 20 days, and I might add, it's 20 workdays. I'm working just about every weekend at home trying to keep up with everything that's going on. February 17th, your last city council meeting, your special city council meeting, was our first big milestone with the authorization to move forward with the purchase of two fire engines, both a Type 1 fire engine and a Type 6 wildland fire engine. Since that time, I've been working on filling up all those compartments, as I mentioned, the big toolbox. So we're trying to identify all those tools that we need to put in the toolbox, cost out those tools, and then make that shopping list so that we have those items identified as we move forward with the budget process for fiscal year 2021, '22. Been working on identifying what our uniforms are going to look like, what our personal protective equipment, both on the structural side and the wildland side, trying to price out all those different pieces of clothing and personal protective equipment for our 11 firefighters and for our 15 reserve firefighters. Working on the fire department patch contest that we hope to reveal at the beginning of next month, so that we'll have community involvement as we move forward and build this identity for your new fire department. We have successfully applied for a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant for an additional $72,000. Now, when I say successfully applied, we met the deadline, we applied. We don't know if we received the grant yet, but we were able, in the first two weeks that I was here, to get that application in and have it accepted by FEMA. We're also now looking at a second grant called a SAFER grant, which stands for staffing for fire services, and we're seeing if we meet the requirements for that one. And if so, we have to apply back to that one by March 12th, so next week. So we're also working on that. The grant that we did apply for was for what we call a source capture diesel extraction system. So if you remember, when I talked about our new fire engine and being it a clean cab engine, keeping the turnouts and so forth, out of the cab for the carcinogens being exposed to our firefighters, this is the same thing that we want to do at the fire station. When the fire engines leave, the exhaust out of there carries benzines, which is a carcinogen. And so we want to capture that at the point of the exhaust and basically filter it out the roof instead of it filling up the apparatus bay now. And so we need three of them for the three bays in the fire station. We also worked with Congressman Ken Calvert. We had a meeting with him, who has written a letter to FEMA in support of our grant application. So we had a good meeting with the city manager and other city staff, with our, our local congressman. I've met with three different members of the community who contacted me and expressed some interest in what we were doing and why we were doing it and how we were doing it. And I've met with all three of those individuals, and at the end of our meetings, we walked away with a positive outcome and were able to explain what we were doing. And all of them voiced interest in doing whatever they could to assist us as we move forward in the development of our fire department. I've been reviewing a lot of different computer programs, what we call records and management systems. So when we get up online, we need to track our training hours. We need to track our incident reports. We need to track our policy manuals and the different trainings. We need to do payroll and all staffing things. So there's a lot of different processes and programs that we need to look at and identify what are the most cost-effective, what's going to be the best ones for us in our working environment, and then I need to identify the cost for those, and again, put that as part of the budget process. Each one of those, and I've looked at probably about eight of them so far, about an hour or two long, in a webinar as they walk through and tell you the, the pros and cons of those different, those different programs. City manager and I have been meeting with stakeholders both inside the community and outside the community. We've met with about seven different groups so far as we're going out and introducing ourself, explaining what we're trying to do, and build support in our operations as we move forward. We had a key meeting yesterday with Riverside County Emergency Management Department and the REMSAside, the Emergency Medical Authority side of that division, and trying to understand exactly what we need to do to become a paramedic provider through the county REMSAs office. So that was very helpful for us. I've been working with the city's management analyst, Tyler, and working on our community outreach programs. And we've already prepared a press release that will be going out for this week, and we're trying to keep the community informed, as I'm keeping you informed, as we move forward in this endeavor. And one of the things I tried to hit on in that press release was, A, all the things that we're doing, the, the new fire engine, but I keep using this terminology or nomenclature of a Type 1 and a Type 6 apparatus. And so I'm trying to, I try to explain in this press release the difference between them. There's really two different components to a Type 1 and a Type 6. One is the equipment and the capability, and two is the staffing requirement. And so there's been some comments out there that is it a Type 1 or isn't it a Type 1? And so I, I hopefully have been able to explain the different components and what exactly the fire engine will be.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. And then finally, I was in communications, and I've reached out to an organization called the ISO, or the Insurance Service Office. And the ISO basically rates fire departments and water systems, and from that rating, insurance companies sets rates on the ability of a community to defend itself against fire. And so we don't want our rates to be impacted during this transitional process. So I'll be meeting with the, the field representative next week, but essentially what he's assured me is that our ISO rates will maintain as they are for the first year of the new fire department. So what Riverside County CAL FIRE has now for the City of Canyon Lake will carry on for the first year, and then after we collect data, they'll come out and do an evaluation of our new fire department and then give us a new rating. So everything should be status quo. We've reached out to them. We're going to meet with them next week, and I'm pretty comfortable that, that that will be secure.
Chief?
Yes.
I didn't realize ISO rates cities 12,000, 15,000. I thought there was a population. And number two, what's our current, what's our current, what's occurrence rate? I mean, where are we right now?
Population-wise?
We have four? What's our number?
I, I don't have that number. I've asked the ISO for that number, and they will not give it to me because we are not the provider providing fire protection services right now. We'll be meeting with the Riverside County Fire Chief tomorrow, and that's one of the questions we were going to ask them.
Okay, okay.
I haven't been able to find the document in our community so far of what our current rating is.
Okay. Good luck.
And then finally, I've been working on job announcements and job descriptions for the new fire department so that we can get ready to start our recruitment. And we've been working backwards to try to figure out when we need to hire and when we need to start that hiring process. And we're probably looking at a hiring process that's probably going to start around August, so we can get the employees through the testing process, through the application process, through the background process, get them fitted for uniforms and turnouts and all that kind of stuff, and then start work either in late November, early December. So it's a, it's a lot of work to get all that stuff done. And, and again, everything else is coming together as I'm trying to meet the deadline for the city and gather all the research information that's out there on what it's going to cost for the startup of the new fire department. So it's, it's a lot of work. And staff has been great. I think it's probably a reality for all the staff that this one person, this new department, has already impacted just about every person at city hall with my questions, with requests for what are the benefit programs, how do we do resolutions, how do we do agenda bills and so forth. And so I, I am interacting with every person at city hall, and I'm having an impact on them in their time and their day. So it's just, and they've been great in understanding as we move forward in it. So that concludes my report. Busy month, busy 20 days. Still having a lot of fun, great place to work, great people to work for, and we're making progress. And I'll be back every month to continue updating, and we will continue our outreach program so that the community is formed as we move forward. So available for any questions you may have.
I have a comment. I just want to say thank you for coming to do this update. A big part of what we are doing is trying to make sure that the community feels that they have a status and a progress update as we go. And, you know, not all of us speak fire language. So the ability of you to come here and communicate, not only openly and thoroughly, but in layman's terms, I think, has been impressive and is well taken.
Thank you. And again, I, I need to realize when I use these terminologies that everyone may not understand them, so I'm going to try to be more layperson communicating when I do that in the future.
No, no, you're doing good. I just want to say thank you for that. Not everyone is Larry Green. Anyone else?
Chief, I just want to say thanks again for taking on our constituents, our residents here, and meeting with them. That means a lot, especially for, for us. I get called regularly, and I'm blessed because I get to serve on, you know, our ad hoc committee with Larry, and he's taken me under his wing and educated me a lot on the fire talk. But I just can't thank you enough for taking those meetings. And paying attention to what people are saying on social media, too, is a huge thing in your position, to be able to take that on and address some of the questions that people have. I know that Casey and myself are trying to answer as many questions as we can as they come up. So if you get a text message or a quick email from us or from Chris, it's because we're right in the middle of a conversation with a constituent. We don't want to not say the right fire talk. So thank you, thank you for the help on that. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. And one of the things Tyler and I are working on is we're trying to think through all these questions that are out there. We're trying to see those questions that are being raised on social media, and we're trying to build a fact sheet. And we hope to have that, I believe, sometime in the next month or so, that we're going to have the fact sheet out and get it out there that hopefully will preempt some of the questions as they come up.
And I think, I think, Chief, that, you know, you, you presented really well in your video that you did with the city manager. I wouldn't be afraid to sit with Tyler and look at doing a series of videos on the updates that you're giving, because you present well. I mean, it's easy to understand when you're communicating, and I know this stuff is extremely complex, and I can imagine you hitting your head against the wall trying to describe the different types of trucks to the person who's not sees this every day. If you and Tyler do a video and get it out there pretty regularly, I know that when you did your first one, I got a ton of text messages and Facebook instant messages saying, hey, you weren't kidding, Jeremy. This guy's pretty, you know, he's professional, he's serious, he cares about the community, he wants this to happen, he wants this to succeed. So that's just my two cents on, on the digital component of it.
Well noted, and we'll, we'll make sure we address that. And on the fire engines, we provided to the media in the press release, the drawings that we presented during the council meeting. So hopefully they'll have that as part of that, too.
As you've probably experienced in Canyon Lake, we have a large fire community here. I have five fire agencies represented in two blocks around me, so all of them are asking questions. But that's okay, because it took a while for us to get to this point. I'm glad you're carrying it forward. I'm glad to hear about recruitment. Obviously, I'm interested in the, in the process and the total operation concepts that we'll be adopting, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Jordan, anything?
No, I can just echo what everybody else has said. I've heard nothing but good and great things about our new chief, and I just want to thank him for all the hard work that he's doing. And I understand that you're the first one here at work every day. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I heard that, too.
I do. I'm an early morning person, but I do sneak out a little bit early. I like to, it's getting better now, but going over the Ortega right now.
I was just going to say, do you have to go around 76 and come up?
I go over the Ortega.
You go over the Ortega. Good luck with the bridge.
Hopefully, we'll find a different living situation by then.
Well, thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
Dale, anything?
Thank you. I feel really optimistic that we're going to be able to get the guidelines or get the goals met that we set. So, it sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any public comment cards on this item?
No public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chief. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to city manager comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor, only one update tonight. We have been, staff has been working diligently on the revised Personnel Policy Manual, where we are intending on bringing that to you at the April meeting because we really need to have that solidified before we go into the draft budget for next fiscal year. The content of that policy will impact what we, you know, what we budget. And so, that draft budget for next fiscal year always comes in May. And then, we take the feedback from the council in May, make revisions, and bring the final for council approval in June. So, we need to have that personnel manual done before we bring the draft budget. So, we are scrambling. We did look at samples from other cities, and we ended up taking the newly revised sample from the city of Rolling Hills. Our finance director, Terry Shea, also does work for the city of Rolling Hills and had firsthand knowledge of that process, which is helpful. Their law firm scrutinized it heavily. And so, we thought that was a good starting point. And then, we have been going line by line, word by word, and revising it to meet the specific needs of the city of Canyon Lake. So, that will be probably the big item next month. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, next, we're going to move on to council member comments, keeping in mind that we're limiting this to three minutes. Councilmember Aaron France, would you like to start?
Yes, I have no problem since our city attorney and Alex from CRR stole half of my SCAG report.
Sorry, sir.
That's okay. So, mine will be pretty quick. We had a WRCOG meeting this week and it really, it consisted of, excuse me, nothing but proclamations and tributes to Rick Bishop. There was no business conducted whatsoever, except a little bit in closed session, which of course, I'm not going to address. But we had some great comments and, and as Hittler here, he'll be missed. He did a wonderful job. And so, if you're still listening someplace, Chris, thanks again. And the only other meeting that I had was my Vector meeting. And Vector has sent out their annual report where they're, well, they intend to apply pesticides for purposes to surface waters and waters of the U.S. within Western Riverside County. And really, what that means is that they're applying chemicals to storm drains, catch basins, et cetera, for, to curb larvicide. So, that's something that they do within a 300-mile radius situated in Western Riverside County of all the different districts. And I'm not going to read off all the ones that are affected, but that's one of the things that they do provide. And also, there's been a new mosquito found in South Florida, and it says it's an aggressive biter, of course. And as I say all the time, I'm not going to go into the, all the details, but I have it here and it's available if anybody wants it. I usually leave it in my binder and sometimes the Anna gets a request for somebody to look at something, but not very often. But it's here and I won't bore you with it. And that takes care of my three minutes. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is that just in Florida or are we going to see that in Riverside County?
Just now in Florida, but they fly, you know.
Oh, dear. Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Green?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. RCA met on October 1st, or we, excuse me, October 1st, March 1st. And the merger has gone quite well with RTC, RCTC, my mouth full. We've established Legislative Affairs Program with Joint Agency to both look at engagement and analysis of dollars, both at the local, state, and federal levels, and how it's impacted. The state of California and the new governor's proposed budget has set $7.6 billion for resource protection. So, with the legislative advocates that we have in Sacramento, joint, plus the help with the federal side, Calvert's side, Western Riverside County is doing very well. The goal is to get the MSHCP finalized in three years, which then RCA will become a maintenance agency. The total acreage for the MSHCP is 500,000 acres, and that is joint lands. So, that will complete the project. We have 365 of those, 365,000 of those acres completed under signed agreements. One of the big discussions is the increase in fees, which there's going to be a meeting with all partner agencies, as well as Chamber of Commerce's. It will be a rollout on how these new updates and ordinances and fees, based on the next study that was done. And just to give you an example, the rebate, the cost currently today is $2,234 for the management fee that you pay to RCA when you develop a house. In 2022, it will be $3,635. Cost for fees in Riverside County is almost $76,000 for fees before you build. So, some of the things we're looking at is called the Legacy Home Rebate Program. Those are for property owners that have property that have been in their possessions prior to the adoption of the MSHCP. If they have and they're going to build their dream house, those fees, they will pay them upfront, but will be rebated to them. This program is done in a lot of places. AQMD for Electrical Vehicles and other agencies use something very similar. Very controversial on the rebate process and how it's to be done. So, the meeting with the local partner agencies will talk about how, hopefully, this will be less impact on the local agencies, planning departments. But also, how developers, and it doesn't really apply too much to Canyon Lake, but large developments can make a prepayment in advance because a lot of times, these projects take three to four years to come out of the ground. So, they can prepay their fees upfront. It lessens the impact on the other end, and so, it gives a little more management and planning. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few things. All things transportation is what I like to talk about in these couple minutes. I'll start with RTA. RTA, you know, as many of you know, is our bus transit here in Riverside County. We've been blessed that there's been no new COVID cases since January 21st. Knock on wood, we hope that continues. Ridership is down 72%, and that's obvious because of the pandemic. It's been kind of brutal for the organization, but they've been able to utilize some of the resources that they get to help out with homelessness issues, providing food, and transporting seniors that need transportation throughout Riverside County. Turning the page a little bit in regards to RCTC, I was just appointed to serve on the I-1591 Express Lane Committee. I was excited to take this committee up because I drive the dang thing every day. If I'm not on the Ortega, I'm on that express lane. And the good news is, is that the construction is almost completed. You're going to see those lanes open up, and people are going to have access to a quicker route to the 91 headed towards Orange County and coming back as well through Riverside County. So, that's going to help transit and just the flow of traffic. We're showing a 70% to 75% traffic patterns from where we were at before COVID. So, people are on the roads a lot more, and we're trying to hopefully provide the resources so their commutes aren't a complete nightmare. In regards to the construction happening over here on Walmart, I got good news. From March 1st through, actually, today, the 3rd, we had road closures from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that is finally completed, so the traffic should ease up a little bit when you're commuting in the Lake Elsinore, shopping around the Walmart area. That ramp is almost completed, so hang on and we'll get through it together because it's been quite the struggle. Probably a good time, actually, during COVID to not have as many people on the roads to finish such a big project where people drive on. Lastly, in regards to SCAG, the big push in regards to transportation right now is finding locations for buses, you know, where to park people. Cities are having a difficult time pushing this idea of having town centers or communities live on top of each other and kind of decrease transportation. So, that's going to be an ongoing struggle that we're seeing from SCAG and how they find new ways to basically get people out of their cars. So, it's very interesting conversations that we're having at that level. And if anyone has any questions in regards to what's happening in Riverside County on the roads that you're commuting every day, please feel free to call me or text me or email me or find me on Facebook, and I will get the answer to your question. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Welty?
This month, I attended the Leju meeting. That was my first one. It was pretty interesting. One of the main topics was the Lake Elsinore. They're going to do some studies to see how they can deal with the pollutants in Lake Elsinore. They're going to look at doing some habitat studies to see if they can somehow reduce the amount of pollution in Lake Elsinore. As a Canyon Laker, I've always looked at our lake and said, you know, we've got to really work to protect our lake, and it's incredibly important that we keep the pollution out. And that was really, for many years, a big interest of mine. And then, as I began to reach out and look down the hill a little bit, I realized that Lake Elsinore is problem is multiple times more than Canyon Lakes, and that they have a big problem. So, they're our neighbors and our partners. What happens with them also affects us, so we hope that they can come up with some solutions. Another issue we talked about was the Leaps Projects, which is essentially, they want to build, they're looking to build a reservoir on the top of the Ortegas. And what they will do is when electricity is cheap, their intention is to pump the water up the hill to the reservoir, and then, when electricity reaches its peak or expensive times, they're looking to bring the water down from the top of the hill. There's some resistance in Lake Elsinore to that. They're still, in some ways, it surprises me, but they're still plodding along, trying to get that approved. It's been going on, as far as I know, about a decade. There's no need to have public meetings on it every month because everybody would get very bored with that. But as they reach their milestones, I believe they talked about a milestone maybe in the next six months. Hopefully, we can, you know, get them to do a public meeting, probably in Elsinore, but we'll let you know when it's going to be and you can go down to attend. The impact on Elsinore, again, is going to be pretty severe. The impact on Canyon Lake will be far less. They need a lot of water to make that work, and they'll probably bring it through Canyon Lake. That could bring us some better quality of water, more consistency of water. But at this point in time, it's still a little unpredictable, but we will make sure the public in Canyon Lake is aware of it when the time comes. Another which was kind of a novel but interesting was cloud seeding. They talked about looking at cloud seeding. They think they can get another, about 10% more water out of the clouds if they do it appropriately. There are some concerns about the health of the people affected. You know, what are they going to put in the clouds? How's it going to come down on the earth? How's it all going to happen? There was a lot of concerns about that. Again, it's the same thing. We will make sure that as they get closer and if they finalize and decide to move ahead, that we do have the public meetings and we do keep the community involved and engaged. Okay. And, okay, I also attended the Riverside Water Task Force meeting. It was more informational than anything, but JPL was there, and the amount of information those satellites provide is amazing. I'm sure Darcy could talk about it, but there's no guy standing out in the stream with a stick anymore, measuring the depth of the water. There's no guy standing out with his transit figuring how much subsidence is going on. The snowpack, you know, again, the guy doesn't have to march up with his snow boots and stick the pole in the snow. JPL does amazing amount of, provides a major amount of information for us. And I think as Darcy was talking about earlier, how important is this to be data-driven when the state and cities make decisions, and how important is it not to be agenda-driven? Let's get past our personal agendas and let's, you know, the importance of looking at the data to make decisions that make our systems work. Some, as we all know, sometimes it feels like we're at the mercy of some agendas rather than at the mercy of wise decisions. So, it's important we have the data. That's about it.
Okay. Well, thank you. As for myself, I was very happy today to have a community chat at the country club. Coffee this morning at about 7:30. There was a pretty good amount of attendance, socially distanced, of course. Lots of interesting comments, questions. I was honored to have my mayor Pro Tim stand or stop by. That was great. We are looking to do this every month on the Wednesday that council meetings fall on. Vice President Burke mentioned that she's going to co-host with me next month. So, if you are interested, please attend. As you saw today, we had Hadley Carter as our Citizen of the Month. That was very exciting and I think just such a great opportunity to showcase the amazing people that we have in Canyon Lake. We are always interested in community submissions for our Citizen of the Month. For the next couple of months, we'd like to, you know, plan in advance. So, if you do have anyone who you would like to recommend for recognition, we are definitely interested in receiving those names. You can reach out to our management analyst at media@canionlakecay.gov, and we will take those recommendations. The more the merrier. Also, I believe that we are looking up in terms of potential movement in our tier having to do with COVID-19. So, everyone cross your fingers that Riverside County is moving in the right direction. I saw that they were opening youth sports. So, I'm personally super happy about that, and I'm sure a lot of our residents are as well. And I just also wanted to say Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone the rest of the month. Thank you all for a great meeting. It is now, our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, April 7th, at 5:00 p.m. for closed session, 6:30 p.m. for open session, and we are adjourned at 9:03.